Stand if you're able because we're going to do the pledge of allegiance and we're going to have a quick prayer.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Now for our quick prayer. Gracious and loving God, we gather here to work on the finances of the city. We give you thanks for this staff, for the work they've put in already and for this council and for the guidance and direction that we need to lift this city up, Lord, and provide the direction and the vision that you would have us have. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Mr. City Manager?
Mayor, do you want to do roll call?
Yes, we do need to do roll call.
Just checking.
Thank you.
Mayor West?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Turner, absent. Councilmember Durio?
Present.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Present.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Sherwood, absent, and Councilmember Crenshaw, absent.
All right, and there is going to be a lunch upstairs in the city manager's conference room after this. Mr. City Manager?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Once again, it's great to be here with you to discuss the 2026 budget. This is our second meeting of the council to have this full discussion on it. Today, we're going to cover some of the things. Last time, we had about a 30,000-foot view. Today, we'll get about 20,000-foot view with one of the main things being that we'll be looking at projections for the rest of this year. Now, when we set the budget, a budget at any point is just a snapshot in time. And so, when we prepared the budget, it was a snapshot in time. So, as the year has progressed, we've gone through and been able to update things and look at projections for the rest of the year. And we'll be sharing those projections with the, this year, I mean, today, I'm sorry, I apologize. And, you know, as I said, things have changed. We worked on some things. We've adjusted budgets. We've made reductions. We've gotten more information. So, as we've gone along, we've been able to make that picture much clearer during this process. So, we'll be doing that today. And also, we're just going over the strategic plan, touch a little bit on the bond financing. I just want to go over the calendar with you a bit. Do we have that on the screen? Just a couple of few things. Like today, we're having that second budget discussion with council. And we'll be going along the way. We'll be doing things. The next major thing with staff is where they will be meeting with them individually to discuss their individual budgets and getting that information and putting together a draft that'll be presented to you at the third workshop by the individual department directors. Just looking further along the line in time, that second budget workshop is due for June 11th. Bill, special work session with staff and the council. June 11th, second, no, that's today, I'm sorry. July 30th, this is third budget work session, I apologize. And then by August 18th, we'll have a proposed budget and five-year CIP. It has to be filed with the city clerk's office. Is it 45 days or, I forget how many days before council is to consider adoption of the budget? So, on August 18th, a proposed budget will be filed in the city clerk's office. Then August 19th, the next day, I'll be presenting, making a presentation of that budget to city council. In between, there'll be some other things you have, logistical things you have to do as far as considering tax rates and making publications and notices. So, from August 19th to September 16th, that's when you will consider approval of the budget. So, that, that's a whole time period until it's formally presented to you, to city council will be having a consideration to approve it. So, that's almost a month. So, that's what we're looking at. And then the new fiscal year starts October 1st. So, that's all I have to say in my opening comments. We're going to just go to things. Today's information should, it's probably not as intensive as the last meeting. So, we're here and we encourage council to ask questions or ask for clarity, whatever.
So, we're going to begin with the bond financing 101?
Yes. Yes, we're going to ask Mr. Dusty Trailer to come up, Dusty and Derek to come up and do a presentation on bond financing.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, Mayor members of the council. Dusty Trailer with RBC Capital Markets. We have the honor and privilege of serving the city of Beaumont as financial advisor. And Derek is bond counsel to the city with Holland and Knight. Just kind of a brief bio and kind of who we are. We are consultants hired by the city to represent the city on the debt issuance process, whenever you're going to finance various capital improvement programs through various types of debt instruments. And so, before you, on this page, we just kind of have our bios there. I've been with RBC Capital Markets for almost 25 years. It'll be 25 years in January. And I work primarily as a financial advisor, somewhat as an underwriter as well for issuers all across the state of Texas. I don't, I don't finance anything outside of the Texas market. There's enough going on in Texas to focus solely on Texas cities, counties, school districts, and that sort of financings. Don't hold this, y'all don't all hold this against me. I am an Aggie. But again, have been in the business for 25 years and greatly enjoy doing our work for the city of Beaumont.
And then, as Dusty said, I'm Derek Mitchell with Holland and Knight. Been practicing about 25 years. Been with the city, but I put that in, looked at that this week, 15 years. It's been a while. So, it's nice to see, you know, some new faces and faces I've known for a while. But Dusty and I have worked together helping Beaumont with their debt issuances pretty much around the same time. So, we enjoy it and we want to come and educate you a little bit about just the basics of the bond, bond business.
Kind of bond, kind of just bond 101, et cetera. So, if we'll move, move over to the next slide. The next slide kind of gives just a definition, hey, what the heck is a bond? Bond is, you know, we throw this term around, but a lot of people go, what is bond? Bond is just another name for a loan. It's in, in our world, it's securitization of revenue streams for the city, but it comprises a loan. It's municipal bond, an interesting interest-bearing security that's issued by or on behalf of, in y'all's case, the city. Most of the time, municipal bonds are tax-free. There are instances where actually municipal bonds are taxable to the holders of those bonds, but it's just a promise to repay lenders for their investment in, in city projects.
And, you know, when I, I teach a class at U of H sometimes, and one thing I tell the public, glad some of the public's here, always ask students to raise their hand if they actually use cash to buy their homes or their cars. And typically, no one raises their hand. And the, the whole point is, the reason we have municipal debt in general is because we don't have enough money, right? We don't tax, we don't want the city to tax the citizens such that it's a pay-go, right? There's just not enough cash that comes in. So, you got to issue some debt to have roads and bridges and civic centers and the like.
If we, right, if we were taxing enough to be able to do everything on a pay-go basis, tax rates would have to be dramatically higher. We'd have to bring in a ton more cash every single year.
Right.
So, in the, in the role of kind of the, the names that you hear in the issuance process, you see on this flow chart up at the top, financial advisor and bond counsel are the entities that work directly with the city, with the issuer. And then below those guys are various other, other entities that get involved in the issuance process. So, you've got disclosure counsel, that's not always used. That's the disclosure counsel. Anytime you're going to issue a bond, there's going to be a securities offering statement. Oftentimes, disclosure counsel prepares that offering statement. Actually, here at the city of Beaumont, we all just kind of work together with the city to prepare that offering statement. There's not necessarily just separate disclosure counsel involved. Then, once that offering document is, is out there and is ready to go onto the streets and into the market, then the city usually engages underwriters. Those, that's the investment banks that are hired to actually go out and sell the bonds to end investors. Remember, when you're selling a bond, it is a little different than a loan in that it's not simply one slug of money. It is a series of bonds. Anytime we sell something, it will be City of Beaumont Bonds Series 25. And the reason it's called a series is because literally there are multiple bonds that are actually being sold at one time. And the underwriters are taking those bonds in their individual pieces and selling the individual pieces to different types of investors to then comprise the full amount of the bond or loan and funding that the city receives. Derek, I'll let you discuss the role of other attorneys?
Sure. There are, there are no other attorneys. No, at the end of the day, bond counsel is what we do. That's us at the top. Disclosure counsel, again, as Dusty mentioned, is they would help to issue or to draft the, what we call official statement. And then you have the underwriters. So, you have the, you've heard of them, the big banks, the Goldman Sachs, the JP Morgans, the otherwise, the RBCs. And then underwriters counsel would then represent the underwriter as well. So, that's another, another lawyer in, in the mix. And then, I guess, the capital markets, you know, I always describe capital markets as most of us own municipal bonds as part of your 401K or 403B portfolio because it's really safe debt. And so, the closer I get to retirement, the more bonds I own.
Right. And so, yeah, capital market investors, true, could, could represent folks like any of us that may hold municipal bonds in our, in our portfolio. We may, you know, individuals may purchase municipal bonds. There are also the big bond houses. You think of State Farm, PIMCO, Travelers, Federated, things like that. And they're coming in at, you know, as opposed to individuals who may be buying 25 to $50,000 bonds at one time. These larger investors are actually coming in and buying million to $2 million, $5 million blocks at any one time. And you need all of those to fill in the, fill in the gap to purchase all of the bonds of a city's municipal debt issue. So, on this next slide, we talk a little bit more about the roles of the individuals that are involved or the, the team members that are involved in the issuance process. So, as financial advisor slash municipal advisor, we are kind of the overall strategist of the debt, debt issuance process. Derek's probably not going to like this term, but sometimes I think of it a little bit like in a sports analogy. The city, you guys sort of being the coach of the team. You guys have an objective to, to finance various projects and you enlist a financial advisor, kind of look at our role in that is as a, as a quarterback of the team in that you guys have got a strategy for how you want to implement your plans of finance. And we go out and implement the overall strategy, help you decide what types of obligations to finance various types of projects. And then, along those lines, developing a long-term plan of finance, meaning what tenor are those bonds going to have, whether they're going to be 20-year, 25-year, 30-year bonds, and what the repayment structure is going to look like so that we can help you guys manage the rate impact of those various types of bonds, help you manage whether or not they're going to, what type of INS tax rate there's going to be when you, when you issue those bonds, or maybe what type of utility system rate impact there's going to be on those bonds. Then we work to kind of just conduct a whole series of processes along that issuance framework, help you guys coordinate the, the activities of the full, your full financing team, prepare that official statement, the offering document. And then, anytime you're going to issue bonds, we help you coordinate the activities with the bond rating agencies and then also the underwriters, et cetera. As your financial advisor, we can't be your underwriter. We have a fiduciary duty to represent the best interests of the city. So, one of our, one of our roles in that fiduciary is to help make sure that the city is getting the best interest rates that you can based on the market conditions available at the time you're in the market. So, I can't go out and be the one actually selling the bonds. We've got to help you engage somebody that's going to do that. And then, we're going to hold their feet to the fire and make sure the interest rates they're charging the city are appropriate based on market conditions and the city's financial condition.
You know, and so, as Dusty mentioned, in, in the football, I, I always like, when we do this presentation, we laugh because he says he's the quarterback. I think he's more like the GM, I'm the quarterback. But either way, bond counsel, what's important is when we come to, before you to issue debt, that's when I really get started. So, I'll, I'll speak with city manager, city attorney, and of course, with June about the project. But when we come and ask for your blessing, your approval, that's when I step in, draft all the documents that are necessary. I work with, of course, with your city clerk to get things filed. And then, we work with the Texas Attorney General's Office. Texas is very unique in that regard, and that is, RAG actually approves most bond issuances. Other states do not. What that does is that gives the underwriters and the capital markets more confidence in the debt that is issued in, in the state of Texas. So, we have to jump through a lot of hoops in order for that to happen. That's really a big role for us. And then, secondarily, which is just as important, is your tax opinion, okay? So, the whole point in the city being able to issue debt at a lower rate is because it's going to be tax-exempt to the, to the, to the, the investors, right? And so, we provide that opinion as well, that, that in our opinion, based on all that we know and the law, the tax, the interest on those bonds will be tax-exempt. So, that's very important from our perspective. And then, of course, we work with the city and with the financial advisor to deliver the bonds to the holders. And then, of course, that's when the money is delivered to the city.
Certainly, certainly. And, and so, within the state of Texas, and we'll talk a little bit about this, within the state of Texas, there are various types of debt instruments that are authorized by state law. And within each one of those types of debt instruments, if the city is going to issue one of those debt instruments, Derek's role is to make sure that that debt issuance is in compliance with state law. So, he's going to draft those documents, make sure those documents are drafted in accordance with the specific state law for which you're, you're issuing the debt. And then, again, presenting that to the attorney general for the attorney general's approval within the framework of that law.
So, we talked about the underwriter. I think the next slide is?
Yeah.
Underwriter, same thing. We talked, underwriter, purchaser, and then, what was the other one?
Underwriters counsel.
The council, same thing. So, we, we talked about that a little bit. So, you can move to the next slide.
Certainly. So, the rating agencies, you guys have heard us talk about the rating agencies. It's very, very, rating agencies that are primarily using municipal bond business are Moody's, Standard &amp; Poor's, Fitch, and there's another one now that's pretty active called That's exactly, almost exactly the same thing as if you or I are going to go out and take out a loan to buy a house or to, or purchase a car, the bank's going to pull up our credit score. That's what the rating agencies are doing. They are assigning a credit score to the city and to the, to the actual bonds that are being issued based on the revenue sources that are securitizing those bonds. And then, that rating score then provides information to the investors on how credit-worthy is the city. The higher the credit-worthy that the city, higher credit rating that the city has, the lower interest rate, just like the higher our credit score that we've got as an individual buyer or individual borrower, the lower the interest rates that the banks are going to lend to us at.
Municipal bond insurance. So, some issuances will have insurance and others won't. And I look at it, it's just an easy, easy math equation, right? So, if AAA is the top, then if your insur, if your, if the issuer's rating is lower, okay, than AAA, then Dusty will speak with your CFO or your assistant city man, city manager on whether or not you should get insurance, right, at the AAA rating such that the rate, the interest rate now will be, I guess, the calculation.
Interest rate just can be a little bit lower. Effectively, you're just, the investors have the ability to rely, if you go out and purchase bond insurance, they're not relying solely on the financial strength and credit of the city, but they're also, the investors are also looking to the credit worthiness of this insurance company and by that, able to buy down the interest rate a little bit. So, what we do is we just simply look at, all right, does the math make sense? And the only way the math makes sense is if it lowers the interest rate enough such that the cost of the insurance is paid for by the reduction in, in interest cost for the city.
Right. We talked about the attorney general again. They approve the final, they provide the final approval for the transaction before we close. The paying agent, they receive the funds and disperse the funds that are paid to the bondholders.
Yeah. You, you, anytime you're going to do a bond deal, you may have two, three, four dozen different investors that are actually buying those bonds. And the paying agent just steps in the way of making sure that the city doesn't have to write three, four dozen different checks each payment day. Paying, you just send one payment to the paying agent and they submit it to the individual bondholders. Then, on the next slide, we'd like to just kind of get into what are some of the typical types of debt or financing mechanisms that are available to cities? And this is specifically geared towards cities. So, ad valorem tax secured debt instruments, meaning these are instruments that would be paid back by your property tax and specifically from the interest in sinking portion of your property tax. Whenever the city levies a tax, there's two components to that rate. M and O portion of the rate, that goes to pay salaries, turn the lights on, put gas in vehicles, et cetera. And then, the INS portion of the tax rate, that is the portion of the tax rate that can solely be used for the repayment of bonded debt.
So, I guess, so, and then you have, so you've got general obligation bonds, which those are voted, those are voted. It requires voter approval in order to issue those types of bonds. Certificates of obligation, that requires notice. It does not require voter approval. It requires notice to the, the citizens, if you will, that the city intends to issue debt. And then, of course, tax notes. Tax notes are, are, I guess, a shorter, typically a shorter seven-year maturity, and you can issue those also without going to the voters.
You can issue those without going to the voters or without providing the 45-day notice. You can issue them very, very quickly, but you're limited there to not financing things for more than seven years. So, typically, those are used for much smaller projects.
Right.
Because you wouldn't amortize them for as long a period of time. Then, another type of debt that is commonly used and commonly used here at the city of Beaumont are system revenue secured bonds. And specifically, here at Beaumont, we have primarily used water work and sewer system revenue bonds. Those are bonds that are, that are issued solely for projects within the utility system to improve the utility system of the city. They're not subject to voter referendum because the debt is not repaid by a tax. The debt on those is repaid solely by the net revenues of the utility system. And those bonds can vary typically, you know, it can go out to 40 years, typically 20 to 30 years is what we pay back. And any, when we talk about these payback periods, we're always trying to match things up, right? So, we don't want to go out and finance, we don't want to have the city go out and finance a vehicle with a 20-year payback. Or we don't want to have the city go out and finance short useful-life items with a 20 to 30-year payback. But there are certain items that we know are going to live in the ground and are going to have a long useful life. So, we're always trying to manage, all right, what's the appropriate length of term for this debt based on the useful life of the asset, but also trying to mitigate the rate impact in terms of the rate that it costs citizens and ratepayers.
And then, so, as Dusty mentioned, so, city of Beaumont, certificates of obligation, and then the waterworks and sewer bonds are typically what we issue. Other, other revenue, I mean, other bonds or other obligations that are issued in general, facility revenue bonds, that's something that is so, the revenues of which are solely used to pay off that debt, okay? So, we've seen those before, but it's, again, it's off the city's books. It's specifically for, it'll be paid for, the bonds will be paid for by the revenues for specific, specific projects, excuse me. Hotel occupancy tax bond, hot, hot bonds. That's, I'll call them convention and entertainment tourism bonds. Those are used specifically for that purpose as well. Sales tax revenue bonds, very similar to hot bonds. They're used, again, specifically from that source. And then, you have tax increment rem, oh, tax increment, TIRSs, TIRS money. That means you've created a, a special district within the city or the county and the, the, some of the tax revenue, that actually is property tax, some, some property tax could be sales tax that are generated in a specific boundary. You use the funds typically for that boundary alone. And then, public improvement bond, PIDS. PIDS are, your public improvement district bonds, those are similar to TIRSs, just a different way to finance it.
Right. Often used in development-type deals, especially like we see them oftentimes in central Texas, North Texas. A lot of issuers are utilizing public improvement district bonds to implement the public improvements within, say, a new master plan community, things like that. And so, those are becoming a very, very popular debt instrument type. All of these, any, anything that we've listed here under other, those are a little bit unique in terms of they're unique in terms, they're not securitized by ad valorem taxes, they're not, they're not securitized by the direct utility system of the city. And because of their uniqueness and their revenue structure, oftentimes, those types of debt carry a little bit lower rating than what your general obligation, certificate of obligation bonds are going to carry, or even your utility system bonds are going to carry. So, because of that, oftentimes, these bonds that are listed under other have a little bit higher interest rate because they're not, they're not deemed by investors to be quite as credit-worthy.
So, I think?
Those are the formal slides that we put together for this presentation. Again, we wanted to kind of keep it as a high-level bonds 101 type of discussion, but we also want to let it be a discussion. And so, more than happy to answer questions, provide follow-ups, anything you guys may have.
Chris, Councilman Durio.
Thank you, Mayor. So, how exactly does the, the funds that come from these bonds, how does it work its way back to us so we can use it for different projects?
Sure. So, whenever you go out and issue those bonds, you're, you're selling those bonds to the investors and then, at closing, that money is aggregated and wired to the city. So, just like if you or I go to the bank to take out a loan, and at the time of closing, that loan is used to help us put down the proceeds to buy that house, the same is true here. We go out to the market, we sell these bonds, those investors are then contributing that money to the city's project account.
How long a process is that?
You can go ahead.
I'd, I'd say it's immediate in terms of, oh, yeah, the money, when, when the money is wired, before we close, literally, we have to get confirmation that the money has been wired. And then, after that, I'm pointing here because I know, he knows, after that, I think, I guess it's up to you when you put them in. I don't know if y'all have one account or specific accounts, but I'm sure you have a project account.
Okay.
And so, when we, when we come to you, your city manager, assistant city manager has talked about what those funds will be used for, and literally, they'll be deployed.
Now, when we, when we come and tell you guys, hey, we're, we are coming to you to have approval for the sale of your bonds on, on a given day, because of that Texas Attorney General review process, it generally takes 20 to 30 days after that before the money is deposited into the city's bank account. Because you got to go through that review process before you close. But once the AG has given that approval, then we close. And when we close, all of the money is delivered to the city in that, in that timeframe. So, from the time we sell bonds to the time that the money, all of the money hits the city's bank is between 20 and 30 days.
Has the, has the AG ever not approved them?
Sure, sure.
Really?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, there are, there are certain situations where the, the law may have changed and the AG decides, well, even though you started the process, you know, before, we, things have changed and you need to, you know, start over again, there may be some incorrect information in a document or two. So, there's, every now and then, but not, not, it's not likely, not typical, but we've seen it.
Their, their review processes, I, I think on our end, their review processes have gotten more and more thorough.
Yeah.
And quite frankly, they're looking for footfalls. They're looking for, oftentimes, they're looking for any little thing in a document to say, nope, you got to go back. But that's why you hire a good professional team to manage that process and make sure the i's are dotted and t's are crossed.
That's what you guys do.
That's what we do.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilman Hilliard?
So, is the interest rate locked in? What if, over the course of the bond, we, our, our credit rating drops?
Yeah.
You know, how does that work?
Every, every bond that we have sold here at the city of Beaumont is a fixed rate, has been in a fixed rate of interest mode. Yeah, we, we typically do not sell variable-rate bonds. There are some instances where it makes sense, but that is not some instrument that we've deployed here at the city of Beaumont. They're locked in for the life. So, if the, to your point, if the, if the credit rating goes down, doesn't matter as it relates to those bonds. Their interest rate's fixed.
Councilman Turner?
Well, the way we prepare our streets and handle our streets, can you kind of go a little bit in depth of the type of bond we use for our streets and historically in the city of Beaumont, why?
Historically, over the, I would say, over the course, and I'm just speaking basically over the course of past 10 or 15 years, when you guys have issued bonds for street purposes, you've done that through the issuance of certificates of obligation.
Yes, sir.
Whenever you guys have issued those COs, primarily, those proceeds have been used for street, various street improvements across the city, typically with an amortization of about 20 years. You know, Derek, you want to kind of get into a little bit more on the why?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, exactly. So, the legislature created. So the legislature created certificates of obligation or the ability to use that tool specifically for what they call public works. So in public facilities. So the whole point is uh things like streets, um anything with, to do with water and sewer um are things that COs are typically used for parks, um fire stations, those that, you know, are in the public's interest. And so that's exactly why you see more, or not more, all of your streets over the last probably ten, fifteen years.
Right.
Being funded with certificates of obligation.
And, and it's very common, it's, it's very common for cities to do that, that way. I mean, just think about it, you're talking about uh projects that are, that deal oftentimes with uh essential services, public safety matters, things like that. And, you know, you've got risk sometimes with those items on an election, right? If those items were to fail in an election, then you've got to take a step back and maybe you can't get back to the voters for a period of two or three years. Well, now you've had to delay this project for two or three years because you, you, you couldn't fund it because of a failed election.
And, and do those typically have that lower interest rate y'all were talking about versus some of the other ones that had the higher possible interest rates?
Yes, sir, they do. They, they carry uh low, they carry low interest rates because they carry, they still carry the full faith and credit of the city's adverbal taxing authority. So they're backed by the INS tax rate. So you get the high, you get the city's highest uh bond rating with those types of obligations. Same, same bond rating on a certificate of obligation as on a voted GEO bond.
Wow, okay.
And with House Bill thirty eight thirty five, that's what created the super majority for general obligation bond, the sixty percent. Did it have any other effects?
Uh, that's the, that's the, the major effect, yeah. So um it, bottom line, it just makes it more difficult to issue GEO bonds.
That just passed this legislative session, went from fifty to sixty percent of voter approval for general obligation bonds for cities and school districts and I guess counties.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the state doesn't apply it to any of their stuff, though. Uh yes, Councilman Williams.
Is there like a limit to how often a city can go out for general obligation bonds or?
It's really not a limit on how often you can go out for general obligation. If you're talking about like a voted.
Yeah, like if something went out, I mean, I didn't know if you, if you had to wait X amount of time before you did it again, or is it just, you just go through the process?
You know, obviously you've got your bond election dates, or the state only allows you to go out for an election in November and in May. So that, you, you're bound by that. Uh but other than that, you're really not, you're really not bound by how often you can go out.
Right, it's, it's really up to the city, you know, I'd say city management in terms of how often they think they, they, they want to go out. Um typically, if you go out for a bond, it's going to be for a lot of money. And so you'll spend it over three to five years, it's typical. Um and so I see most three to five year bond elections.
With, for general obligation bonds.
For obligation bonds, that's correct.
For general obligation bonds.
Right.
Now, I get, this is, this is a little bit maybe even more to your point. Let's say if you were to do a general obligation bond and it did not pass. But then you said, man, we really still have to do that project. You couldn't then come back and issue certificates of obligation for that project for a period of three years.
Okay.
Yes, Cal, uh city manager.
Question in regards to the new legislation, will that go on the ballot in November or does it go into effect immediately?
September one.
Yeah, will go into effect on September one.
Right.
Okay. Also, could you uh kind of share with council about refinancing? Council member Hilliard asked, asked about fixed rates, but because we regularly review our portfolio to see what we can save dollars to refinance. I want to touch on that.
Certainly, so if we were to go back and look at the, the outstanding bond portfolio of the city of uh, the city of Beaumont, many of the outstanding bond series of the city of Beaumont say such and such refunding bond, such and utility system refunding bond, GEO refunding bond. And the reason for that is anytime that there is an opportunity to go out and find a lower interest rate on those bonds, we come to the city and, and look for you guys to, to take advantage of those lower interest rates. You guys have always been really good about understanding those opportunities and lowering. And that is just, to your point, Mr. Williams, that is just like if you or I have a, a fixed rate mortgage that's outstanding at a high interest rate and we want to refinance it to a lower interest rate. The same is true here for the city with your bonds. We, we come back, refinance those bonds to a lower interest rate. One thing that is a little different about refinancing a bond versus refinancing your home is usually when you refinance your home, if you had a thirty year mortgage, you refinance, well, you basically come out and take an, add another thirty year mortgage. So you tack on more years on your mortgage. We don't do that with a city typically. Typically, whenever we refinance the city's bonds, if there's fifteen years left on those bonds, when we get to that refinancing point, we sell bonds that have a fifteen year maturity, so we, we don't further extend out that debt. We keep the uh, the final maturity the same as when it was originally issued. But to answer your question. In fact, in fact, we, we plan to be back before the city council this summer to have you guys approve a, a refinancing of, of certain bonds in the utility system. There are some bonds in the waterworks and sewer system debt uh that we've reached the call date on uh and have an interest rate where we believe we can lower it and help save, save a little bit of money by refinancing.
Councilman Turner.
Um as we do these CO bonds and, and we kind of see some of this debt fall off, do we kind of track the debt that's falling off comparison to what we can actually add? Can you kind of explain that process? Cause prior to this meeting, that question came up and I just wanted to kind of explain.
Sure, we're always looking at, at the, the aggregate debt service payments of uh the city's debt in each system. And when I say each system, you've got the adverbal tax secured system bonds and at this point, the utility system secured bonds. We're always checking, tracking the annual debt payments on that. And whenever, uh whenever there's one that falls off, we're looking, we would fill that in with your new debt to try to help minimize a tax rate impact or utility rate impact uh based on how we structure the debt and, and debt instruments falling off.
Perfect. And, and lastly, mayor, Mr. Manager, we've been able to accomplish CEO bonds and every year, and I know you've only been here two years, but since I've been on council, every year we've been able to actually lower the tax rate, correct? I just want to make sure I could state that on there because it is accurate. I do know we lower the tax rate every year.
Over the last five or six, and you're gonna, there's gonna be a slide on that later. That's gonna show you the history of the tax rate and it has reduced over the last five, six, seven years, whatever that time.
And my reason for stating that, because there's a lot of citizens in misinformation out there that the city of Beaumont raises the tax rate. And since I've been on council, we've lowered it every year and it's been four years while taking on some of these CEO bonds.
Correct.
All right, well, thank y'all very much.
Thank y'all very much. Appreciate the opportunity to work with you guys, look forward to seeing you all again this summer.
Thank you.
All right, y'all have a great day.
Yes, sir. Now we're going to move into the strategic plan update.
Yeah, that's, that's gonna be by Mr. Miles Hanes and he hit, left the room for some reason quickly, so. He's, he's on his way back, so we can either do a show it. Oh, there he is, okay, thanks. Miles, you up?
Okay, good morning, mayor and council. Well, y'all been through a long process, so y'all finally seated, so that's good. So for staff and everybody involved, uh I'll be doing an overview of the strategic plan and just kind of walking through kind of the process of it and then basically give you just some general updates. If you don't already have it, uh you should have is the uh strategic plan in front of you, but you have a leader's guide. So I'll walk you through kind of what, went through that process. We started that process in um August of twenty twenty-three. And so the council then at that point in time, uh they met with a consultant, they did a SWOT analysis of the city. They sat down for many sessions, just going through each department and talking about really, in a sense, like a wish list, what do you want to see the city in five years, ten years, fifteen years? And then that got you to what we call strategic planning. Previously, I'm from the private sector, people just did planning in so many different ways. It really just kind of depends on the size of the organization. Uh Beaumont being very unique, we're one of the seven organizations with at least a thousand employees or more that are based in Beaumont. So you have Lamar University, you have Baptist, you have St. Elizabeth's, you have the county, um city of Beaumont and BISD. So those organizations, they have at least a thousand employees or more. So when you, when you have that many people in an organization, it changes the way you strategize. And so that leads us to the reason and for strategic planning. Uh when you're in a small organization, you just plan differently. It's not, you don't have that many stakeholders, you know, most organizations don't have a council or a board. Uh sometimes it's just them and you're looking at, you know, maybe sales or you're looking at trends in the market. And so what we do is we're looking at it from a strategic perspective. So most cities are going to have a strategic plan. If, if it's a good city, it's got a strategic plan for the most part. You, you're rarely, if any, find any cities that don't have a strategic plan. And strategic planning is more, it's more of a marathon, it's not a sprint. Uh I've completed five marathons, so I know it takes a lot of time to prepare for a marathon and go through that whole process. And that's what y'all did, y'all did this whole process. And, and typically the years are from three to five. So right now, as you can see on that um presentation, you're only a year and nine months in to this first five year phase of the strategic planning. You know, some of your main documents as council members and mayors, you know, your, your charter, it, your charter, it gives you your authority. As you go through the budget process to let you know what you can do with your resources. And your strategic plan is more of like the one document that really tells us about your mindset, what your outlook, how you want to see the city. It's one of the few documents that y'all are, you know, you share. So we read this document, you know, we imagine that we're hearing the thoughts of our mayor and city council members. So you start this process and you come up with a mission. And the mission is Beaumont City Government is to provide exceptional municipal services. You know, you have a plan for the future in a financially responsible manner, open, transparent, ethical. And, you know, a high performing city team is a big thing. You want to provide outstanding customer service and you want to involve the citizens. And so this is the things that you guys came up with or during that timeframe. And as we go through this process, we're going to try to listen to your priorities and see if any of this changes. You know, we're going to come back and do a refresher on this strategic plan and probably Q three, Q four of, of this year. So later part of the year, you'll go to this. So o- once you got your mission in place, and then you look at the vision. So in twenty thirty-eight, this is what y'all envision. It's like if you invited somebody to your city, these are the kind of things you want to talk about. Oh, man, it's a beautiful community, it's safe, it's a vibrant downtown, the riverfront, great neighborhoods. It has old and new neighborhoods, uh connectivity to the world, great opportunities. You know, the residents and businesses have community, they have unity and pride. You know, these are the kind of, these are really the statements that you want to, to be said about Beaumont. This is what y'all said when it came to twenty thirty-eight. And you want it to be a special place to live. And then you drill down a little bit more and you say, okay, hey, in five years, we want it to be a great place to live, financially sound city, providing excellent services to the community. You know, you still, you want it to be vibrant downtown, riverfront, you want it livable neighborhoods, old and new. You want upgraded city facilities and infrastructure through investments. So although this document is going to highlight some projects as I go through them, this particular uh strategic plan is really in detail then. You really should be reading it and you should be communicating. It's your document, it's the document that we get to understand your mindset, your big priorities. It's really the shared unified document that you guys have, one of the few. And so uh keep that in mind as we're going through this particular process uh to kind of hear some of the updates, so next slide. All right, so uh on, once you got to those five goals, what we did as a team is we worked with a consultant and it basically came over the actions to meet those goals. So if you want it to be, you want to say Beaumont is a great place to live, what are some actions that align with it being a great place to live? You know, if you was telling your family member if they're moving to a different city, it's a great place to live. You know, these are some of the actions that we determined as a team to come together and what would make it a great place to live. So action one uh is the economic development policy strategy. That's headed up mainly by Ms. Christina Loke, she's our economic development manager. And as you know, we're very, we're still partnering with the chamber, but we're way more aggressive in trying to land deals or identifying incentives, aligning with bigger networks, um looking at data approaches, looking at how we market our city, so that could be a little bit more proactive than in traditional sense where you just waited for somebody to call you. And so we've taken on that approach with this particular action item, action one. Uh we've adopted new chapter three twelve tax abatement policies. Obviously, the hotel project is a big portion of this particular conversation. Uh you've increased neighborhood empowerment zone applications by sixty percent. So when you say a great place to live, this is just one of those actions. So keep in mind, keep that thought, your thought is to think about Beaumont is a great place to live. That's what you wanted us to know and you want the community to know. And so we work together and this is one of those actions, uh next slide. The next one was a water park feasibility study. The discussion about a water park had been going on for years. And so one of the bigger things was looking at a feasibility study. And as you see, um it's in the CIP, as you have already had a presentation from the CIP. It's a design phase for twenty twenty-eight and then FY twenty-nine is looking at the construction. Obviously, these things, as you see on this particular slide, it says the next step, primary decision maker. This is a city council thing. So you guys would make a decision if this is something that you want, you don't want, when you want it and what type of process you want it to look like, or is there any type of partnership? So uh like I've said again, you, you talked about that Beaumont is a great place to live. And then we said, okay, this is one of the actions that can align with that. Next slide. Obviously, you know about the Real Time Crime Center, uh there are a lot of neighborhood associations, they have uh expanded really uh their reach to do more regional connectivity. They do a lot of trainings for the officers. I think we're becoming, I mean, we've won some awards through uh different recent conferences because of this type of technology and, and it's really proactive in uh putting us ahead of the curve in, in crime prevention. Because that was a big thing for you guys is if it's going to be a great place to live, it needs to be a safe place to live. And so Real Time Crime Center aligns with that, uh they just have four new analysts hired. And obviously they're providing daily coverage, uh they have numerous investigations that you probably have heard about through social media, on the news, on how this, whether that's through the license plate reader, getting neighborhoods engaged. And I think, you know, uh Councilman Lass, saw you at the Barrington Heights HOA meeting yesterday and they were all into this particular idea because it, it, it makes them feel safe, right? These communities won't buy in into this particular system. And so um the Real Time Crime Center, I think is, is doing a great job and the police department are always, you know, doing a great job. So this is a part of that goal one, it's uh making it a great place to live. Uh next slide. Citywide beautification, uh we've done way more tree planting, way more stuff that you really don't see. Um sometimes when it comes to the different options and recognition that we've had throughout the years, uh there's been a lot of partnerships with companies like HEV, Coca-Cola, the, the Magnolia Group and the garden clubs and, and beautifying the parks and being more open to different type of partnerships throughout the year. So uh this is a big thing, it's for a tree plan because you guys said, hey, if it's a great place to live, it needs to look like a great place to live. And so citywide beautification headed up by Mr. Kenneth Argad, it's been a big thing. Um they've been heavy about the removal of the trees because that's been a big issue is for dead trees and things like that. So I'll go to the next slide. And at any point, if you have any questions, please just feel free to ask me a question. If not, I'll try to go in this same format and may speed it up a little bit. Uh this indoor sports space study is kind of really connected to that recreational center or a sports complex is the better way to say it. Um that, that has been discussed here lately. Uh this was a previous uh discussion, I'm going to see about a study to see what the feasibility would be. And um it's been brought before the bond committee. So obviously, you know, there's a bond committee evaluating projects to bring a recommendation back to council uh in a future date. So this is that particular project, uh city council will make an ultimate decision on something like this. Next slide. Uh litter cleanup is similar to the beautification, uh but we've done more of a targeted approach with this. Like the neighborhood clean blitz is basically essentially putting a lot of services in one particular area and trying to clean these areas up and just really try to. and trying to clean these areas up and just really try to reduce, um, really build trust with citizens. Uh, re- reduce any time that we haven't been able to respond and, and just keep these areas clean, any blighted areas. So this is part of that beautification for the city of Beaumont. Um, we've been doing citywide cleanups. And that's a huge group of staff. Uh, you have staff Tessa, Lynn Foot from Code Enforcement, Fernando with Solid Ways, Mr. June Ellis heads that group up. Our communication department pushed those things out. Mr. Kenneth R. Gettis and Mr. Fernando from Solid Way. So, you know, you have an internal committee and they're looking at opportunities to make sure that we, one, help volunteers who want to clean it and we clean ourselves. So we've done that to kind of increase partnerships and stuff like that. We also work with the school district and different community partners. And we'd love for y'all to show up to those kind of things too. That's, that's big for your particular area. They like to see you out there cleaning and, uh, sometimes it means a lot to them. Next, next slide. Uh, community mental health, this basically started as just an item in the strategic plan. We started meeting with stakeholders. We met with Jefferson County. We met with Lamar University. We met with the hospitals. I mean, I can't think of it. We've met with Regina Rogers. We met with Kim Feeling. We had Dave Feeling office in there, Christian Manuel. Everybody that interacts with the mental health community, we interacted with. I even did a tour to see the mental health court. Because mainly this is overseen by Jefferson, by the county. And so we, we just identified, what are some top five things that we can work on as a group together? We basically played a community organizer type role and they identified some things. But the biggest thing that came from this particular session is that, uh, Fred Jackson at the county's office, they identified a resource that we were able to bring to them that really can help them on connecting residents to mental health services. And I'm excited to say that they'll be actually having a work session with this particular group, June the seventeenth. And so we do this work to try to organize and find solutions. Obviously, you know, community, mental health can mean so many different things to so many people. But when you bring that many partners together, you know, what's the next step? And I think we've provided our next actionable step. So, uh, next slide. And Mr. Williams, you let me know if I'm talking too much, just kind of give me a head nod and then I'll kind of move faster. Uh, our next one is, uh, events review and, uh, Ms. Emily Willers over this particular project. They, they've really just taken events and, and modernized them, advanced them, included more families, included more vendors. I mean, there are different things that they've done. So this is, this is more of an internal best practice that they have done year over year. Really, it's, it's more than year over years, event from event, because they have so many events. Uh, I can't quote the number, but I think it's five hundred or more. Is that the correct number? Five hundred? Yeah. She said I was close enough. Uh, so, uh, that's a big thing for the events review. Obviously you guys get a chance to go to those events. Those are huge for families. And when you go to the event one year and then you see an opportunity for your kids to go next year and engage and interact, those are big for the city. And so sometimes those are morale boosters for citizens, like they get a chance to go out there and enjoy. I know I got little kids, so I can see the fruit of those, uh, different changes that they make in different events. Uh, next slide. All right. You know, this one, dogs out. They are at Rogers Park having fun. So this project is, should be a one sentence. It's complete. It was a, uh, a big topic and we got it completed. So that's a big thing. Rogers Park is a great place for this area. And Mr. Kenny Smith is, uh, the office facilities director. Next slide. Okay. So obviously big topics about the fire and EMS. And then so I'll try my best to kind of give you an overview of this particular goal. Cause this, this is different than a great place to live. This is the next goal, which you said as a council that you wanted Beaumont to, you know, you want to make it say Beaumont is a financially sound city, providing excellent services to the community. That's what you wanted to say. And so a part of that is fire and EMS and the nine-one-one, uh, software system. They have installation and configuration is underway by I T. Um, obviously they have done more to really modernize our approach to solving problems. Chief White has brought some revolutionary type ideas with the Right Site and, this Good Sam app. And so although those are two different things, they're integrated in a great way to help residents. Because, you know, they, they on the front lines. I'm not, I've never been on the front lines like that. But they were able to kind of have a work session with you guys to talk about that particular idea. And then move towards implementation, uh, just on May twentieth. And so those are big topics when it comes to fire and EMS. Obviously it's been a huge topic, but they're doing a great job. And so, uh, one out of the five new medical units have placed in service at Station Seven on March twenty-seventh. Uh, they have four EMS ambulances currently in build. Two additional ambulances at Fleet Nine awaiting vendor bill slot. Uh, only two empty paramedic vacancies remain due to successful hiring incentives. So, um, all this garners a lot of discussion. Uh, you know, sometimes we need to stop and say thank you because they're doing a great job. So we, we appreciate Chief White and his team, um, on adding to this particular goal. So I'll move to the next slide. There's no questions or comments. Uh, citywide staff review is a huge thing. Uh, the biggest thing from this is obviously we're going through budget season right now. So our HR directive is Carmen Williams. It's working with our city manager to identify, you know, for the main part, you know, where we will be on staffing. Do we need to look at repurposing versus creating new roles? Um, and, you know, they work often year-round guidance for both planned and unplanning, unplanned staff needs. We, obviously with retirements and things like that, uh, they're going to help departments to justify new positions requests based on data-driven insights. I know a big thing for councilment turnovers to make sure that we're, you know, where we at on the statewide average. So that they use these data things. Ms. Carmen brings a wealth of knowledge and a huge network to making sure that we're implementing, uh, best practices and that, you know, we're preparing for today and tomorrow. So, um, this is, uh, ongoing. We'll move to the next slide. Our city rebranding, um, this is led by our communications director, Ms. Tracy Kinnick. And they actually just won an award, third place for cities over seventy-five thousand for state or city. So, you know, sometimes, um, you know, we're focused in on our city, but at the state level, they're getting recognized. And that's a big thing for us as a city. You know, how do we compare at the state level and sometimes even at the national level? Um, so they're, they have a timeline of F Y twenty-six to twenty-seven for a city logo. And branding refresh is planned for consideration. Uh, obviously you've probably seen some surveys out there to try to get feedback on maybe a tagline. Because your, your branding is everything for a city. Uh, next slide.
I think they had a first place in something too, Mike.
Yeah. They said the, it, I have, it was a first place for something else. I think it was a podcast. And I have it on that, yeah, the podcast. And I have it on that next slide coming up. Uh, oh, I forgot my water. Give me one second. Okay. So action four, city organizational culture alignment. Uh, Mr. Williams has done a great job of that. Every time I get to his point, I just really highlight him as a leader. Because, you know, when you talk to young people in the profession of city administration, they usually stay at jobs longer because of the culture, because of the leaders. That really is what makes a huge difference, uh, when it comes to retention and things like that. And then putting best practices in place. Um, you know, there was a leadership training done on Lean Six Sigma. And every, every department director, um, attended and they would actually get a certification. So they'll be Lean Six Sigma white belt. So if you don't know what Lean Six Sigma is, it's just a way to improve processes, solve problems and use data to do that. That's a huge thing in the private sector. So if you're private sector, you're, you're looking at numbers, processes and things like that. They are too, and they're getting trained more and more as we continue. So we, we also have some departments that are interested in moving towards the green bill. Uh, that's more advanced methodology when it comes to these best practices. So we're not just in a public sector bubble. We, we're having best practices from both industries, private sector and public, uh, public sector in this particular, uh, city. Uh, we have bi-weekly directors meetings. Uh, Mr. Williams likes to write stuff on the board and let people look at it over and over. So that's kind of like, uh, that's an old school way of keeping up with your goals.
Have to move on.
Move on. Okay. All right. We'll go to, uh, we'll go to the next one. All right. City communication enhancement. This is, uh, where we're talking about that first place statewide for the Beaumont Beat Podcast. And so that, um, that's what Mr. Williams highlighted here recently. We've completed a media training, media mixer. We have better interaction with the media, uh, being that Tracy brings that wealth of knowledge to really help the team out and making sure that we're communicating our message and, and do it effectively. Uh, next slide. All right. So this is the financial policies, fund balance policies, review and refinement. Um, you guys made an updated, uh, policy refinement, uh, in the m- March twenty-fifth, uh, council meeting. And you basically improved the clarity and the fund balance definition in use. Uh, you refined guidelines to align with the best practices in municipal finance. So that was a big thing. It's, uh, one of your great assignments. So, um, that, that was one of the things that supported financially sound city. We want to move to the next slide. Okay. Then we have the water fund balance policy review. Um, everything is existing. Obviously the fund, minimum fund balance on this particular fund is fifteen percent of annual operating expenditures. Um, they are continually looking at this and then this is something that's more of an ongoing thing to identify, you know, where we are. Uh, and June Ellis heads this up to work with our financial advisors as they came up early and spoke a little bit about these uh, balances and fund balances and best practices. Next slide. Uh, the strategic plan implementation, I think we're a little bit higher than sixty-nine percent. Um, because some of this information has been updated because you have the bond committee meeting. And so, uh, there'll be more advanced discussions on bigger projects on what you guys are interested in or not interested in. Um, this is a five-year strategic plan. You also have the fifteen-year version of it and that's twenty thirty-eight. So, um, we're continually doing this. You'll get updates, uh, every so often. Like I said earlier, uh, we'll do a refresher probably at the later part of the year. Um, so that we can kind of get more, um, engagement from you guys, the newer council members on this particular strategic plan. Next slide. Uh, customer service training. Mr. Williams, when he got here, made this a mandatory thing. So it, it is reoccurring for staff. Uh, there was one in the fall. Uh, there was one in the spring. And, and like I said, this is just a required thing. So to making sure that we are servicing customers, uh, to the best of our ability. Next slide. There's been a lot of talks about bond. They just came in and gave you like a little bond one-on-one conversation. But, um, they've implemented corrective discounts on water and sewer services for some commercial customers. They've completed adjustment water sewer rates for outer city agencies receiving inside city rates. Uh, they've increased from seventy-five percent to one hundred percent as per ordinance. Uh, updated the minimum fee for water and sewer services and these are for like apartments and mobile home parks. Um, and they set to cover the tap costs. That's a ten percent overhead in accordance with the ordinance. And so these are just kind of some of the things that go in alignment with the bond improvement strategy, which is a part of goal two. Next slide. We are moving towards phase three of the, um, employee classification and reclassification study that was done a couple of years ago. Uh, October twenty, twenty twenty-three was phase one. You know, October twenty-four was phase two and then we'll be on track for completion. Um, in phase three of this particular fiscal year, F Y twenty-six coming up. Next slide. Uh, the legislative agenda, uh, as you know, it's our second time doing the legislative agenda. We do it in alignment with the sessions at the Capitol. You guys determine what some priorities are. Department directors come up with some barriers they face that are more legislative in nature. And then we develop what they call a legislative agenda. It's a document that we are able to take to, uh, our state and federal uh, partners to advocate for things that benefit our city and to protect, protect the city's, uh, authority, uh, throughout the time. So, um, we're consistently doing that. We have bills passed. Um, the House bill that's connected to the partic- potential hotel project was a part of that. And we'll, next phase of this or next thing with this will be, we'll meet with our, um, legislative consultant, which is Hillco Partners. And so we'll have an internal meeting on what bills passed, what bills didn't pass, how it impact cities. And then we'll come back to you and it'll be more of, uh, Hillco would do a presentation, let you know how the eighty-ninth legislative session went. So that's going to be a big thing on the next step with this, uh, particular legislative agenda.
Miles in line with legislative agenda, got worried that the sixty percent requirement for bond passage did not pass the legislature.
It did not?
It did not pass the legislature. Yeah. It's good for us.
Yeah.
Good for everybody.
I thought I read it did. So that's awesome. And so, yeah, things like that will come back. You know, Hillco would do that and we'll be able to discuss that. Uh, next slide. Uh, the vehicle accident reduction plan. Uh, this is the city developing vehicle accident reduction plan to address unsafe driving behaviors, major and minor accidents and gaps and safety oversight. Uh, key steps include reorganizing apartments to enhance risk management. And so that's been going on. Uh, that's headed up by our city attorney. And so, um, that was implemented, uh, has been already implemented. And they're continuing to drive down the, uh, number of accidents that happen, um, with city vehicles. Next slide. Uh, this is management succession planning. Um, it's a little bit simpler because, you know, it, it allows you to kind of see organization and the depth, uh, really of a team. And so you have the key updates on this one. You have two assistant city managers. You have a new public's work director. You have a new communications director. A new C V B director, a new facilities director, a new planning and community development director. You have a new parks and green space director and your new police chief. And so succession planning, obviously as you know, is if somebody's out who's next up, and so this allows you to see, um, the type of leadership and, and the type of management that we have in place. Next slide. All right. This is the third goal, uh, having a vibrant downtown and riverfront. Um, and the city is exploring the development of a downtown hotel. As you know, I could save a lot of the, uh, updates on this because you will have a meeting on June the seventeenth. Totally discussing further what you guys priorities and plans are, uh, that'll be held in the executive session. So I'll move to the next slide. Uh, downtown master plan as well is probably connected to that downtown hotel and what you guys plan on doing downtown. But there have been some concepts, uh, presented to you. Um, and there's been some things that have been put in place. One of them is obviously the Riverfront Park grand opening, which is this Thursday, June the twelfth, uh, five thirty P M at Riverfront Park. So, uh, that's a big part of the downtown plan and getting people to come down here, work, live and have fun. Uh, so next slide. Uh, food truck park. I know this was pre- previously presented to you guys. Uh, the R F P will be advertised uh, within the next couple of weeks. So that'll be slated for the summer of twenty twenty-five. And then, uh, I think you guys discussed two priority locations, but open it up for the private sector. Determine if they have another location. And so that was the Nature's River. You have the Rotary Park and that third location opened up for some creativity from the private sector. So we'll put that R F P out, um, within this summer, probably in the next couple of weeks at the latest. Next slide. Uh, this is as simple as that dog park. The building is gone. The site is clear. It's waiting on you guys' direction for next steps. So this is that A T and T building. Um, we'll go to the next slide. All right. Um, this is goal four. You want Beaumont to have livable neighborhoods, old and new. Um, and so this is the homeless strategy. The city council and staff conducted several meetings and work sessions to develop the current homeless strategy. The city enacted camping ordinance. And then you did the ordinance enforcement with a task force established to address issues on the streets, inside walk, city parks and facility properties and private property. Uh, we're going to continue to work on this. As you know, homelessness is or an unhoused population is a big topic with cities and, and how you strategize and move forward is going to be huge. So staff continues to work with our nonprofit partners to address these issues, especially through provision of federal funds. Uh, and obviously that could be a little bit different nowadays, but we're still going to continue to move forward in this until, uh, we get different direction. Uh, vacant lot strategy. Um, this is headed up by Ms. Demi Ingham. And the biggest thing with this is that, you know, the barrier for some, some of these lots to get moved forward in the next step is having residential plans. And so they're wanting to implement having, uh, pre-approved residential plans. Uh, and that really will help design and streamline the permitting process and reduce wait time, waste, wait times and cost for homeowners and developers. So that key benefit is you'll get faster approvals assuring the efficiency and development. You have standardized designs that align with local architect and zoning requirements. You have standardized designs that align with local architect and zoning requirements, maintain the community aesthetics. And so this is this will be an ongoing thing, but um we'll go to the next lot. All right, proactive downtown code enforcement. Yeah, I think you usually get either on the quarterly or if not more, you've been getting updates on uh what the team is doing downtown and and how they identify buildings and what's the status of the buildings and uh so this is the product of downtown of quo- code enforcement. Obviously, I just said it's in the way that council adopted a vacant building registry and it continues to support staff efforts of code compliance within the central business district, which is essentially downtown. Um and like I said, council, you already received reports on this. So this is something that's ongoing from um the planning and community development team. All right, then you have your older home revitalization program. Um and the city is working to develop an older home revitalization, modernization program to address the large number of aging properties and explore potential public-private partnerships for redevelopment. This program is pending. It lacks staff resources to implement at this particular time. Um so they hope to begin some research on this in FY twenty six. Next lot. And then you have the hallmark. Um and the hallmark funds, the funds have been allocated to legacy C D C. Uh they acquired a multifamily complex off Broadway for eight non-congregant shelters with council approval. Uh legacy C D C are underway with repairs to the structure and coordination of entry. So um they are ongoing with this particular matter. All right, we're getting close to the end. Okay, so this is goal five. We've already stated over and over, these are the goals that you decided. You said, if you describe Beaumont, you want to say Beaumont has upgraded city facilities and infrastructure through investments. That would be the statement uh for you guys and we're going to continue to identify areas of problems. Do they do televising, smoke testing, dye testing? This is done in-house with contractors and it's ongoing each fiscal year. So uh they have a design engineer that continues to work, continue to create work orders for system updates. They have in-house crews that are doing pipe bursting and manhole rehab. And as as you you are continually getting updates on these particular projects as well at city council. Next lot. All right, you have the sewer lift station projects. Uh Harriet Street uh should be, I'll forbid this summer, and Waller Avenue Lift Station Rehab. It should be for the summer as well. Uh Piney Point, Mulberry and Wall Street Lift Stations uh have electrical upgrades and are still in progress. Uh lift station assessment is started FY two twenty four, only two done. That's Twenty Third Street and West Calder at Fig Acre. Um and as a part of the assessment, the Twenty Third Lift Station is about to start a rehab on a forty-eight inch force main and the other end will continue in FY twenty six. So next lot. Uh the city is continuing to address aging sewer infrastructure and inflow infiltration issues through evaluation methods. Um they have a sewer main inspection. It's continuous and ongoing. Uh replacing aging infrastructure and this is in-house and contracting pipe bursting crews. Um I think I said last time, you know, a lot of this work is done here, but contractors in-house cost it's about six million, uh five point seven million was done in FY twenty five budget for the main replacement with these figures. We change approximately one point five and that's overestimation of the city sewer main. So it's a lot of work to be done. That is a lot of work that has currently been done that we know infrastructure is a big topic. So next lot. Uh the stormwater master plan. Um we're requesting FEMA direct administrative cost funding for this. Uh this is a partnership with D D six. Um and the city contributed a portion to it and D D six contributed another portion to this. So next lot. Okay, the infiltration and inflow, this is a study that focuses on identifying and addressing age or sewer infrastructure issues that lead to overflow and surcharging. Um therein phase, the phase three is complete. This included flow monitoring and sewer model completion. Uh the sewer evaluation contracts are in-house and they're continuing to do an evaluation, obviously with the manhole rehab. They're doing step cleaning sewer mains and areas of surcharging and overflows. Um they're doing investigative work, which includes, like I said earlier, that's smoke testing, cleaning, the televising, dye testing. Um and a lot of this you are currently getting updates on as different city councils. Next lot. Okay, uh the lighting under the freeway, the underpass is completed design with W J E engineers. Uh text dot initially rejected a certain color, but they're partnering with Lamar University and using the color white for the underpass lighting. So just so you know, moving forward on that. And next lot. Community investment plan. As you know, you've been presented that. I think it was May twenty second. Uh came to you guys in a city council meeting. Um and then it'll be, you'll get another version of this coming up in the future for your approval of the C I P. Some of these projects will be ha- or have been presented to the bond committee for consideration and um thank you guys are up to speed on this particular item. Next, excellent. Uh civics and upgrade, that's kind of really connected to the whole downtown um project phase and you guys will have a meeting um with Stonehenge on June the seventeenth in the executive session to further discuss what it is you guys want to do with with that particular site. Next lot. Uh the sidewalk master plan, this was also presented to the bond committee recently. Um but we're also looking for grant opportunities for this particular project. Um it is estimated at about three hundred and sixty thousand uh for sidewalk master planning. As some of you may know, sidewalks are very expensive. Um but you have to have a plan in place before you kind of go more comprehensive. So next lot, children museum plan. Um they're currently rev- re- reviewing proposals uh from the R F P feasibility study. Um staff will evaluate the results of the study and then we'll follow up uh with city council on this particular matter. Um next lot. Uh I ten construction, as you know, we've had more updates from I ten and with all the construction going on, you'll continue to get updates. So they're at a lot of neighborhood meetings. Uh I see them at and then they have come to you guys with city council or when things like the you know, updates to the freeways with the lines, they'll come provide updates. But uh we work with design engineers on two projects, this Cardinal section, the East Tech section. Uh the expenses related to this particular project are eligible for reimbursement. Um so that's good to know with this. And then they're actively monitoring incidents. So that's a big thing with all the construction that's going on in Beaumont. Next lot. Oh wow, I made it through. We drink a little water for that. All right, so the last thing is uh these are some of our key steps moving forward. Uh we want to link the strategic plan to the budget. So throughout this budget year, departments will submit their submittals that that connect to the strategic plan and we'll be able to run numbers and identify like a true budget to the strategic plan moving forward. So um that's good. We'll collect and analyze feedback through targeted surveys because as you go through the next phase of the strategic plan, we'll get your feedback. Um and that's pretty much it. I think I've highlighted everything else. Any questions or comments?
Ca- well, I just, I just want to add, the probably key part of this going forward is going back and revisit the plan with this this council because the majority of the council has changed. So we want to know what your priorities are and what's important to you. So we'll be coming back probably sooner rather than later to have that discussion with with this council.
All right, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Uh Councilman Turner?
Uh so I'm pointing out to the mayor, I waited and let you get through it, Miles. I didn't interrupt at all.
Man.
Uh I noticed on one of our goals with our citywide beautification, it had freeways uh right now. I know I could speak for myself that I'm not as pleased with, you know, how text dot is operating within our city in comparison to how I see them operate within other cities when I travel. Uh what I'm requesting, Mr. Manager, is similar to how council has a meeting with B I S D and we can have transparent conversations. I would hope our council be interested in having a meeting with text dot where we can actually have those transparent conversations about our expectations on how we want them to operate within our city. I think it's important that, you know, they operate that same level of integrity and respect as they do in other cities. I just think it could be done a lot better and cleaner than what is being done out here. And also, uh I know they committed to clearing off the size of the freeway. Once construction is done, I just want to make sure we stick to that and I would even be, I would even like to get it in writing. Uh the second thing is a financial goal. Uh what I like to see and I do think we made huge strides, but just with the the fire department, can we get the hiring plan plan spelled out, the integration plan and timeline spelled out? I know we did the merger prior to me being on council, but yeah, we can work with staff and the fire department to kind of get that plan spelled out so we can have something in black and white we can go off of. And just because you planned it, we, I'm more than aware that sometimes the plan can be audited, you know, or changed, but I want to at least have a document we can kind of go off of. So if in two years the council changes, at least they can say, we seen this and this is what they had in place. Uh my next thing is financial goals. I I would like to see a presentation uh with state average. We we talk about deficit spending. We talk about financially where we are, but where we are in line with state average as far as to how our funding applies with other departments. And I know we have some possible wage increases coming up, whether it be public safety, public safety or staff. I kind of would like to know if we do these wage increases, what are we looking at? Are we in a position of where we would have to make cuts? If so, I would kind of want to know what we be potentially considering cutting prior to voting on that. I think it's important. I kind of, I don't want to vote blindly. I want to know where we're going prior to voting. And my last thing is uh with vacant lots, we, it's a huge problem in the city of Beaumont. What no- normally happens is once a older heir may pass away, it's kind of hard if they don't have a family member, nobody in line to take care of that property and it kind of brings down the values of our neighborhoods overall. So what I would like to see is a legislative strategy. I would like to see us put some type of legislation in place to get what our legislators on giving cities more authority to do something or expedite the process and how we deal with vacant lots. I know it's kind of time consuming. It could take years. But, you know, the neighbors have to literally live with it, be next to that and and it's kind of like too much, nothing we can really do with it. I'd like to see us have more authority to deal with those vacant lots. And I think those can kind of, for me, that'll sure up some of the things that I'm looking for with the strategic plan already in place.
And one thing I'll add, perhaps maybe we can schedule a a work session in it maybe not on a council day if necessary, because I know I've gotten some, I've been able to see some plans for uh text dot and what it's in terms of the imaging. But one of the things I've learned, I know that Mr. Mr. City Manager, you were probably aware of when you start asking about Mount Bellevue and some of these other places, why they look at, part of it is, I think historically in this Beaumont as a city was less involved. So we can have them present and then uh and make sure that as a council too, that everybody is aware of the direction in terms of how it's being brought together and what they're envisioning it to look like. And if we want to do something different, uh where the cost would be for us, what they're willing to do and then what they'll share with us. But uh because I know we did that with Lamar University and text dot out there by Lamar to be able to create some of those. So perhaps that's something we can because I know it takes some time too when we do it. So doing it in a regular council meeting may make that exceptionally long, but.
Okay, so we're talking about a council meeting where we have text dot come in.
Yeah, and just do a work sessions, right? Yeah, and 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 also provide some of the architectural renderings. Councilman Crenshaw?
Uh thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh in that meeting, I would like to invite the um bosses of the Beaumont District Engineer from Austin. Because I am not convinced in what I know so far that our local district engineer has uh the best interests of Beaumont in mind and I would like for his bosses to at least be invited.
Anybody else? Well, Miles, I guess that means you did a good job.
Oh, okay, that's good.
It wasn't a two bottle water deal too, so that's a win. All right, we'll move into item number three, the fiscal year twenty twenty five financial update and year-end forecast.
Okay, we're gonna have a uh report from our uh Assistant CFO, Mr. Duncan Brown, uh is going to go over particular uh numbers, projected numbers for the rest of this year, where before we can plan for next year's budget and we have to know what we have to start with. So this discussion gives an update from where we began at the beginning of the year to where we're at now and what we're projecting to be at the end of this fiscal year.
Good morning, council. As Mr. Williams said, I'll be going over uh projections for um some funds within the city. So first, we'll be talking about the general fund revenue. As you'll see, we had a budget of one hundred sixty-four million, ten thousand eighty-six dollars. Uh as of March, our actual collection is four point eight percent higher than last year. We're projecting for general fund revenue, one hundred sixty-three million, four hundred five thousand, two hundred eighty dollars. So the shortage is approximately six million, six hundred, four thousand eight hundred, six dollars uh compared to budget of revenue. Uh the variance drivers would be uh EMS charges. We lowered our projection for EMS charges based on cu- current collection and also we adjusted our projections for sales tax and use uh by one point four million dollars. So the difference between those two numbers give you the six hundred four thousand, eight hundred, six dollar variance. Next lot. Um sales tax revenue, so here we'll show you the sales tax over the last few years. So you'll see um in twenty twenty-three, we had a favorable variance of one million, six hundred forty-nine thousand, seventeen dollars. In twenty-four, we had a favorable balance of one hundred ninety-six thousand, five hundred twenty-one dollars. And in twenty-five, we're expecting or projecting a favorable balance of one million, four hundred seventeen thousand, ninety-one dollars. To date, uh as of March, rather, we are nine point three percent higher than where we were last year in sales and use tax revenue. For property tax, operation and maintenance revenue, we have a a table showing you the property tax uh value and also the total tax rate uh since twenty twenty-one. So you'll see um how the tax, total tax value has increased and you'll also see how since twenty twenty-one the tax rate has been decreased at the city. Today, we are um at forty-nine million, two hundred eighty-one thousand, two hundred thirty-six dollars, uh which is four point seven percent higher than where we were at March this time last year.
Say a couple of things if you go back. Uh you look at this slide, you look at twenty twenty-six appraised values, you know, we we get, we get sometimes Beaumont doesn't get the positive news that you get, but you can see here where appraised values are projected to go uh uh approximately seven million dollars or so for this next fiscal year for us. And the previous slide was an increase of about one point seven, could you go back one more, Tina? One point four seven uh 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 increase in sales tax for Beaumont, what what we're projecting for this year, which is also a good sign for the economy. So uh while we we tend to think things are not so positive economically, these are uh positive signs. Yep, thanks.
Yes, sir. So next we'll have the water and sewer fund revenue. Um so the fund has a revenue budget of sixty-two million, nine hundred fifty-four thousand, three dollars. Um to date, we're seventeen point three percent higher than where we were as of March last year. And then our projection for water sewer revenue is sixty-seven million, seven hundred fifty-five thousand, thirteen dollars. So the revenue projection has a variance of a favorable favorable variance of four million, eight hundred, one thousand, ten dollars compared to budget revenue. Uh the variance driver is an adjustment for charges for services. Uh we increased that projection by four million, two hundred seventy-two thousand, one hundred twenty-one dollars. And this is largely due to uh increased revenue and commercial charges. And you also had some increased revenue for miscellaneous revenue and interest income earned. And then below you'll see the recommended uh rate increases for water and and wastewater utility rates. Um so for twenty-five, we had a recommendation of four percent and ten percent. Uh the city went with four percent and eight percent in the budget book. And then you'll see the rates for twenty twenty-six or twenty twenty-nine uh for each um rate type that where we projected. And then we'll have a new projection, I believe, uh the third budget workshop with the uh rate consultant. So next we'll do solid ways. So next we'll do solid waste fund revenue. Uh, this fund has a revenue budget of 15,880,000. At this point of, in 2025 at March, compared to last year, we were 1.8% higher. And then we're projecting a revenue of 16,699,971 dollars. Um, the additional revenue has a variance of 819,971. This is largely attributed to residential collections, uh, 362,728 dollars above where we expected in budget and then also landfill fees, which is 505,885 dollars higher than what we projected in the budget for solid waste. Solid waste had a rate increase of a dollar 75 in the FY 2025 budget. Excellent. So now we'll get into the expenditures for those funds. Um, first we'll start with the general fund again. Uh, the general fund has a FY 2025 budget of 167,952,0266. As of March 2025, we are 2.3% higher than where we were in March of 2024. And we're projecting, uh, expenditure budget of 162,54,255 dollars for FY 2025. Uh, the reduction in the general fund expenditure, 5,898,011 dollars compared to budgeted expenditures. This reduction is largely due to salary savings. In this projection, we are, uh, expected to see 39,192 dollars in salary savings. And then we also have a reduction of 4,386,126 dollars in the, uh, operations category. The savings in operations is largely due to savings and transfers out. So we were able to lower our transfers out from the general fund to the employee benefits fund based on what we projected in employee benefits. And then we have, uh, other adjustments of 400,000 to the demolition services within planning and community development. And then we also have another reduction of 384,363 dollars in heavy materials within public works. And then the savings between operations and wages is offset by, uh, benefits. We have an overage in benefits of 1,527,347 dollars. And this is largely due to police and fire painting contributions. For water and sewer fund expenditure, we have a budget of 61,314,313 dollars. Uh, as of March in 2025, compared to March in 2024, we are 12.4% higher in expenditures and our projection is to be 61,861,314 dollars higher than what we were budgeted. Uh, the variance of 547,000 is largely, uh, contributed to an increase in contractual services. We're projecting to be 1,888,857 dollars over in contractual services. And this overage is partially offset with some savings from, uh, wages with vacant positions in the water fund. For solid waste fund expenditure, we had a budget of 1 million, I mean, sorry, 15,120,344 dollars. As of March 2025, we were 33.9% higher than where we were in March of 2024. And then we are projecting a budget, I mean expenditures of 14,804,164 dollars for 2025. Uh, the solid waste fund expenditure projection has a reduction of 316,180 compared to budget expenditures. Uh, this is largely due to savings within, uh, fleet for vehicle maintenance and fuel and loop. So in this chart, we'll have, uh, budget versus projection by fund. And so you'll see the general fund, we have what we projected in revenues for budget and then what we are projecting for the year. And you'll see the variance previously mentioned at 604,806 dollars. Uh, then the same thing for expenditures, you'll see where we were project, we, we had a budget of 167,952,266 dollars. And we're projecting expenditures for the year to be 162,54,255 dollars for favorable variance of 5,898,011 dollars. For our sewer fund, we have a favorable revenue balance of.
Mayor, can I talk about the general fund for a little bit? This, this one's really important, what we talked about, and there's been a lot of discussion during the year about the general fund and what we had. You know, as I said, a budget is a snapshot in time and when we took that snapshot at the beginning of the fiscal year, we were rejecting a budget of 164 million and $10. And there was a lot of discussion to say there was an overage of 3.5 million for this particular budget. But as we worked and we've reduced, we've been working constantly to reduce this, this fund and this budget and find savings and stuff. So we're at the beginning of the year that was projected to be a 3.5 million dollar overage. You see now it's a 5.898 million dollars in our favor. So that was an eight million dollar turnaround. That's why you can't jump conclusions at the beginning of a budget. Uh, where it went from a 3.5 and some people called it the deficit. It's not a deficit. We're projecting to be 5.89 million dollars in our favor to the good. So just want to make sure that point's put out there.
Well, and also historically, this is very typical. That, uh, as when I, when we were going through this, and this is just for our point of information that, uh, I know our county judge has been county judge since 2010. And he's, he pointed out, and the same is true with the state as well as the city, and we went back to 2011. Every year, the projected expenses exceed projected revenues in the county budget, city budget and state budget, and it never works out that way because you don't spend all the money and you end up you getting more revenue in. You project lower on, uh, income and project higher on expenses. So I, just as a point of reference, it wasn't something new this past year that occurred. It was just something that got a lot more press. So if you, if you ever want to see that documentation, this is historically, there are, uh, it does project that way. But as you see at the year end, you can also look at how favorable it can be.
Yeah. And this, again, this is a snapshot at this time. So that number can even change by the end of the year. One way or the other, but right now as we're projecting, that's what the projection is.
Councilman Williams.
Is this snapshot through what time period? Is this through the end of May or?
March.
March. Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So as Mr. Williams stated, um, with the new projections, we're projecting 163,405,280 dollars in revenue. We're projecting 162,54,255 dollars in expenditures, uh, which is a favorable variance of 1.3 million, 1,351 dollars, 20, 51,025 dollars. So, um, definitely changed from the 3.5 unfavorable to the 1,351,000, 1,51,000 favorable. So we did change the budget based on what we approved in October to now working with departments and each, uh, fund trying to find out where they stand today. So for solid waste, we are, um, projecting 819,971 higher than what we budgeted. And then we also have a savings of 316,180 in expenditures for hotel and tourism. We're projecting to receive 112,202 dollars higher than what we projected in revenue. And we're also projected to have a savings of 141,749 dollars of savings in expenditures. Employee benefits fund, we have, um, we have a, a decrease in revenue, but that's only because we had a decrease in expenses. So since we have lower expenses, we lowered our revenue. We lowered our revenue by 1,560,580 dollars. And that was because we had a expenditure projection of 29,515,420 dollars, which is a savings of 1,554,300. And then general liability, uh, we increased the revenue projection, 1,651,540 dollars. An increase of 121,540 dollars. And then we're projecting to have a favorable projection of 28,500 dollars. And on this.
Councilman Turner.
I don't know if it's necessary to wait because I just want to point out you had a general fund, but it also shows multiple funds and sources of revenue. Does the city just operate off a general fund? Or does it operate off all the revenue coming in? The reason I'm asking this is more of an educational piece for citizens or people watching, because again, recently everything was pointed out to the general fund, but we have multiple streams of revenue coming in.
Yes, sir. So the general fund, um, pays for the general fund department. So police, fire, executive office, finance, uh, public works, things of that nature. The water fund would fund water utility. So, uh, water, wastewater, those things are funded out of there. Solid waste would fund the landfills and then individuals who work, pick up trash throughout the neighborhoods. Hotel and tourism funds the CVB, the Convention Visitors Bureau. So all the activities are funded out of that. Employee benefits, uh, that the employers receive are paid through the employee benefits funds. And any type of litigation, property insurance claims, legal claims that are paid, are paid out of the general liability fund.
And yeah, just to highlight, Mr. Manager, on my question earlier, that's why I kind of like to see the overall financial impact prior to making decisions on increases for me before I make another vote.
And, and that's what we're doing today. We're sharing you projected information that will be able to have numbers to start with for the next budget. And so let's give us a general idea of what that means.
Thank you.
I believe Councilman Durio had a question, if anybody else did.
The employee benefit fund, that's funded by the, I guess partially by the, uh, payments that the employees pay for their health insurance?
Yes, sir. So they have, um, employee contribution, city contribution. And then you also have, uh, transfers from the general fund, uh, the water fund and solid waste fund.
And that's in case the contributions are not enough, then you have to transfer it over from those other funds?
Yeah. So we do have, uh, planned transfers from, uh, water and solid waste. But if there's any sort of shortage between revenue and expenditures, the general fund is the fund that transfers a lot over.
And, uh, you said, can you say again what the, uh, general liability fund?
General liability pays for claims and settlements against the city. So property insurance, legal claims. That's where those are paid out of.
Thank you.
And it's largely transferred from the general fund as well.
Yes, just on a clarification, make sure we're correct on that number, uh, unfavorable number. That's taken into account that 3.5 would be deducted from that 5.89?
No, sir. So this is, uh, the 5.8 is, 5.9 is budget expenditures versus projected expenditures. On the next slide, I believe we'll have the 1.3 is revenues over expenditures.
Okay. I'll wait for that one. Okay.
This is right. Yes, ma'am. So here we'll show you, um, the revenues versus expenditures on this slide. So you'll see the general fund, as Mr. Williams was, uh, explaining earlier. Uh, projected revenues in the general fund, 163,405,280 dollars. And our projected expenditures, 162,54,255 dollars. Gives us a favorable balance of 1,351,025 dollars. Our beginning fund balance was 44,62,729 dollars. After the fiscal year ends, if the projection holds true, we'd have a projected fund balance of 45,413,754 dollars. Our required fund balance based on the projected expenditures is 32,410,851 dollars. We will be 13,2,903 dollars ahead of the policy requirement.
Duncan, what was the projected fund balance at the beginning, at the, uh, initial budget? I think it was with the 43 million and something.
So in the budget book, uh, for 2025, we were projecting an ending funding balance of 43,407,670 dollars.
So now we're projecting 45,413.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilman Crenshaw. And, and these numbers look great. Uh, and so to, uh, the city manager, um, if these end up being accurate, that's, uh, very encouraging and you are to be commended for that. Uh, one of the funds on here, water and sewer, the required balances, uh, or the required fund balances, 9.2 million. And we're projected at 26.6 million with an over, uh, of 17.3 million. So why is staff recommending a 12% increase on, uh, the citizens, um, if we're so significantly, uh, overfunded in that account?
So those were, um, a recommendation from our water consultant. That's not a staff recommendation. The recommendation by staff will be presented with the budget book when Mr. Williams makes that decision. And so the reason that the fund balances higher than the requirement is because we have, uh, the CIP projects that we plan for, that we go off of revenue bonds. And so the calculation for the rate increases takes into account future debt that we could, um, go after to pay for our water projects.
Yeah. I, I know from two years ago, we've made great strides and that was one of the things is they weren't spending money before on some of these projects that are high dollar projects. And I think we'll get a more thorough explanation, but part of it is we're increasing expenditures to solve the brown water and sewer problems.
Yeah. And I get it. And, uh, great efforts been made there. I just, you know, I'm concerned that there's a a, a perception and, and likely a reality for so many people that their water bills have doubled. And, you know, when you see a 12% increase that, uh, someone, whether it's a consultant or staff, I consider them both kind of the same source, is recommending a 12% increase. I would just hope that with this, uh, very positive projection that we might, uh, think about, um, trying to reduce that significantly.
And if I may, Mayor, and to Mr. Crenshaw, uh, we have for the last two years used a consulting firm to do our water and sewer rate study. And so, uh, they normally wait until we get to about this point so that we can send them various financial information such as how much revenue we anticipate to bring in and how much in expenditures we expect to have. They want our CIP plan. So actually beginning this week, we will be reaching out to our consultant to start that whole process again. And, and they do look at our fund balance. Um, and, and they will look at these numbers and they will make adjustments to the rates accordingly. So last year, uh, the numbers likely didn't look as favorable as they do now. So they will readjust their, uh, recommended rate increases for water and sewer based on the updated information we provide them over the next couple of weeks. And then they will come back at the end of July and give a presentation to council and present what their recommendation is to, in order to maintain sufficient funding in the water and sewer fund.
All right. Thank you, Duncan.
Okay. So I'll continue to go through the funds. Um, as Councilman Crenshaw mentioned, we are 17,392,919 dollars ahead of our projected, our required fund balance for the water sewer fund based on these projections. For solid waste, we have a 15% uh, fund balance requirement and our projected fund balance based on this uh, projection is 4,445,312 dollars. The required fund balance is 2,220,625 dollars and our, uh, we owe 2,224,687 million above our, uh, required fund balance policy for the solid waste fund. Uh, so for this one, we do have a, a planned sale added to the landfill. So I believe the sale could cost up to 4 million dollars. So this is why we are, um, you'll see our fund balance higher than the requirement because we're prepared for the purchase of the land sale within solid waste. For hotel tourism, uh, there is no required fund balance, the same with employee benefits. So the fund balances, wherever it's left is what will be over the policy. And then in general liability, we typically don't have a fund balance. And now we just pay for, uh, transfer enough to have, pay, pay, have funding for our claims. Sorry. Um, next slide. I think that's it. So if you have any questions, we'll take them at this time.
Councilman Turner.
Uh, Mr. Manager, I, I reached out to our tax assessor, uh, Kate Carroll, and she is open to kind of looking at what the property test collection rate was in the past and seeing what can we do as a city to work with the county to see if we can get our collection rate up higher. So i- if we can reach our tool, she is open to a discussion and seeing what we can do to work together to kind of get it to that rate, because I think we're missing out on a nice percentage because of collection. So what can we get doing collaboration to kind of get our property tax collection up?
Okay. That's a good point.
Okay, that's a good point, cause our percentage is lower than state average. So that's lots of money we're missing out on by not collecting those taxes. You know, I don't know if it's people just not paying their taxes or or the method just being used to collect it, but we're missing out on a couple million dollars at least, uh, you know, cause we're at what ninety, I forget that percentage. Ninety six, ninety seven, you're pre- and typically in the ninety nine, around ninety nine percent collection rate. So yeah, uh, conversation with the assessor will be fantastic to have to see what we can do to get that up.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. City Manager. It looks like we may be to council member comments, but before I jump there and it only being ten fifty four, I'm making sure I'm not having some kind of illusion.
No, no, as, as I said during the opening, uh, this would be less intense than the last one with all the information, so, uh, that, that's all the presentations we have, uh, council comments and then I'll close it out.
All right. Councilman Durio, we're gonna start moving your way.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank staff for, uh, the presentations. Uh, everybody did an outstanding job. And, uh, I really appreciate it. You guys were, uh, you answered all my questions and you gave out a lot of good information and, uh, makes this budget stuff easier, uh, to understand. So thank y'all.
Thank you, Councilman Durio. Councilman Hilliard.
Uh, I, I answered all my questions. I, the only question I have is that we reached the, the five million dollar, what, what did we cut? Cause I know that in visiting with these department heads, one of the resounding things I hear is staffing. A lot of them are understaffed and they need more people. So my question is, is what did we cut in order to reach the five million dollar mark? What, what is being left out that may come back and and get us later?
Uh, that presentation had a bit of an itemized list of things that were on that slide. Uh, we pulled it back up, but uh, we'll give you a copy of the presentation. Uh, things that inside the, the departments that were reduced was not staffing at this point. Now, we are reviewing staffing because we have some positions that's been vacant since twenty two. And we're reviewing to see if they needed and those type of things. So if staff, uh, if they want to fill them, they can fill them. But if you hadn't used it since twenty two, we need to talk about it. Uh, so, you know.
I just know that that, that was, that was very important to a, to a lot is, is the understaffed on a lot of these, a lot of these departments.
Yeah, well, thank you.
Thank you. And good job. I mean, if, if we're showing a five million dollar in the plus.
Well, that's versus the three point five.
But that's still, that's way to go.
Thank you, Councilman Hilliard. Councilman Turner.
Just the staff and finance department, I understand projections because it's kind of hard to project where you're gonna end up at the end of the year. And you guys were up with a lot of criticism and critiques. Honestly, we've been transparent through this political campaign and just to kind of get this information out is, you know, is good, but ultimately, like Mr. Crenshaw said, we just want to make sure these projections hold up to the actual real numbers and and I'm, I'm hopeful because I've seen since I've been on council with Mr. Williams that, that number has just started to decrease, decrease, decrease. And again, I understand we're saying cuts. I agree with you, but if you're gonna increase revenue and you're not getting population growth, then you're gonna have to cut somewhere. So at some point as a council, we gotta have those, you know, that dialogue to, if we're increasing wages and, and, and benefits, at some point it has to be a transparent conversation about those cuts. Because we can't challenge the manager with operating a positive in every category and if the revenue isn't coming in and we don't make any cuts, it's gonna have to be one or the other. And I've kind of learned that since I've been here, i- it's, it's complicated to balance that. Especially if you're not getting in, people moving into your houses and you're not collecting the property tax rate at that, that percentage. And we're not aligned with state average with other expenditures. So I actually appreciate the presentation. I think we're heading in the right direction. I just encourage council members, if it's something in the strategic plan that y'all don't agree with, this is the time to kind of speak up because it'll keep rolling. And I just encourage y'all to feel comfortable to speak up on what y'all might not agree with and let's discuss it and see what we can do to kind of adjust it. I just want to be on the same page. We can kind of move the city forward.
Thank you, Councilman Turner. Councilman Williams.
Yeah, thanks to staff for, for putting the, uh, report together. Uh, it provides a pretty clear understanding of of, uh, where mines were headed in the past and and through March, i- it looks good. I think my only request is, I, is it possible for us to get a copy of this report just so we have something to reference?
Absolutely.
Goes on and, and digest it a little more, but, uh, yeah, no, I appreciate the work that went into it and, uh, look forward to talking about it more.
Thank you, Councilman Williams. Councilman Crenshaw.
Uh, yeah, again, I, uh, have similar, um, compliments for staff today. Great job on the presentations. Um, and I do greatly appreciate, uh, the city manager offering to have a, uh, a new meeting to talk about, um, the priorities of this, uh, current council. Uh, compared to some of the priorities that we did see in the presentations today because there are several of those projects that I am concerned, uh, just, uh, do not, uh, meet with, uh, the, the, the true needs of, uh, the city moving forward. Uh, and so I do look forward to the opportunity to, uh, give some input on, uh, maybe making some changes to some of those projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Crenshaw. Madam City Attorney.
No.
No comments? I didn't forget you.
I would like to thank all of the department directors and the staff for meeting with us, um, in a s- short period of time to go over your your, your budget. It was, uh, very helpful. So I hope that when we start meeting with the city manager, uh, we've already made progress. We can discuss the things that are very important to you.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to thank council for your patience. I know you're busy during the day to take time to do these type of things, but it's important to get your input and feedback in this budget process. Uh, as far as staffing, hey, uh, whatever staff needs, I know I, I want to get it. So I don't want us them to think I'm not pro-staffing. I definitely am for that for sure. Uh, you know, again, this is a snapshot, you know, uh, we, we can't start spending money yet cause it could change drastically in the other way. So you have to look at it and be conservative and be careful as, as we go through, through and looking at that type of things. I would ask though, if there's something that really sticks out in, in the strategic plan that might be going into this year's budget, I'd like to get that feedback sooner rather than later, so we won't spend those dollars or, or plan for those projects.
People can email.
Sure, well, sure, email conversations. So we can, you know, it's easier to fix upfront than on the back end for sure. Uh, I think staff, staff's done terrific work, intense work. It's just beginning with the d- directors. We'll be meeting with them and uh, there'll be a lot of paper flying and things all over the place, so we look forward to it though. Thank you.
Yeah, again, just want to applaud you, Mr. City Manager and the staff, uh, and all the directors. And we do get monthly, uh, uh, financials that we are able to review. They're rather length, lengthy. So if you need some assistance, I know our finance department will give you information on helping to be able to see because oftentimes when we just seeing big numbers, but it is something you can track monthly and, uh, the information I, I've found they do an excellent job and gives me a high degree of confidence when, uh, we're in the budgeting process because I see that they are always, uh, conservative in their projections of, uh, revenue and they're, and they're less conservative when they're looking at expenses. So which is the way to be when you're projecting budgets. So with that, uh, the me- meeting is adjourned. So until twenty seventh, and I believe there is lunch upstairs in the city mayor's conference, ci- city manager's conference room.